Like to call to see the Richmond meeting to order March 2, 2022. If everybody could please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody tonight to our council meeting. At this time, we'll open up for our open public forum. Anybody not on the agenda for this evening wishing to address the council? This will be your time. Seeing nobody, I asked the council if we could move on to item number three. Approval of the agenda with just the two items of number eight being eliminated. E and F.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of meeting minutes for 17th. Any questions on the minutes? I was looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item number five, approval of bills paid. Is there any questions on it? Pat?
Check number 21675, G and J awning in canvas. Is that the full? Awning or is that?
That was half.
The rest was paid out of EDA. Thank you.
Is there any other questions on the bills paid? Not a look for a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda for the season for this evening, resolution 2020. Dash 120, approval of February 2022 donations. And the one that's here is the Christmas care drive for $200 to the fire department. And item C is approval of road closure for Jerry's on Central Avenue between Main Street and the alleyway. And that is for May 29th. On 2020, you get their liquor license and all that stuff comes through before for their grand opening.
It's gonna, I think it'll be serving alcohol outside.
He thought so. He wasn't positive.
They're waiting for their permit and stuff so that they can, they know more from the insurance what they can and can't do.
And with this, it looks like there's a street dance. It looks like obviously they're probably going to have some type of a band also too.
Yep.
For the grand opening.
Their grand opening, yep.
Got it.
Alright.
The item is that it definitely gets fenced off if it is. Is if it is going to be alcohol outside. With that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. At this time, move on to item seven, city engineer David Blummel. Start talking about the water tower repairs.
We'll start with the water tower. So, alright, so as you guys know, the part of the 2022 street project was to rehab the new water tower, get a new paint coat on that guy. We had my guys up there to take a look at it. And some of that ice damage that they had found on previous reports, it's a little worse inside that tower than we thought. So rather than be able to just overcoat that thing, I think we're gonna have to sandblast it and overcoat it. There's some pictures in your packet there of how the things look in there. So, main problems are that ice damage inside the tower and then also the coating on the outside isn't wearing evenly. So if we just overcoat it, we're just gonna give. Problem in 10 years with those spots deteriorating again. So you sandblast it and then we should get 20 out of the next set is the idea. So instead of the 175,000, we're looking at about 310,000 for the cost. But I don't know that we have a good, a good way around it. We did have one of my guys do a presentation to staff and we went through it and everybody's on board. So. I will tell you that if we choose to push this off as of 2023, there's a new paint standard where they have to do a dry film painting of 75,000. So there's some incentive to get it done now. So.
The reason for this peeling and different things and ice damage is because of the designer engineer of the tower or what?
No, and so a tower coating system should be 15 to 20 years. We're at 18 years on it. So we're right where we need to be. There's things during, during painting that there's no way you'll catch them shop painting. It just, there's nothing you can do about it. You test dry film thickness as often as you can. These are the spots that wore, whether it's a sun angle, whether it's a reflection, any number of things, whether that particular batch of paint wasn't perfect, who knows? But like I said, we're at 18 years and you expect 15 to 20, so it's reasonable. There are no structural repairs needed on the tower. The tower is good with the exception of some venting. That'll prevent some of this stuff from happening in the future. Some improved venting that's gone, that'll be changed as well. But otherwise structurally, as far as safety, everything else is up to code. So it's, it's really the, the wearing, you know, the coating system that we're looking to fix.
Is there a difference on the warranty, Dave, by doing sandblasting and the whole thing versus the other one or is it just go by the paint warranty?
It goes by the paint warranty, which should be 10 years.
Okay.
So obviously, you know, we're like I said, we're at 18 on the one we're at now. With hopes of doing it all right, you should get to 20, you know, a new overcoat, it's something. When you have a new tank up, you have some shop painting done and site painting. And that, that's the problem. Come into. The new tower taken care of and happy. Again, then we'll have conversation about the one over our head here, what to do with it in the future, but I don't want to open that can of worms tonight, so.
But this is the engineer's estimate at 310.
That is correct.
And then it'll go off the bit.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Is there funding to help any of this out?
So we have it in the request from USDA. And so they will hopefully be answering to that very soon. I'm actually hopeful our water numbers have gone up to the point where we can get funding in water too. We're gonna keep our hand out too. And see what we can find, so.
Oh, it needs to get done.
It does.
Yeah.
So that actually leads me into item B on my list here, resolution approving plans and specs here. I have 130 page plan set, 131 page fan set in front of me if anyone wants to take a look at it. But at this point, we're ready to go. Open bids on this thing toward the end of March here. That's going to be contingent on USDA saying we're good to go, but part of them giving us the thumbs up is you guys approving it tonight. So they've, they've seen everything once. Things. Print out the specs for you as a 500 page document with USDA forms, it's a disaster, so. But with your guys' approval, I would ask you to take a look at that motion or that resolution, approve that thing and then we will get it out on the street and see where things come in. My estimate's a little higher than it was, but until we see where the numbers are with the contractor, it's the best guess we have.
If we bid it out as labeled, can we always deduct the street? Oakwood Avenue between Main and Second Street was on the meeting floor.
Correct. Yes, there, there would be no reason we couldn't pull that from the, the contract based on whatever we, where the bids come in. I think that's the appropriate way to do it too. But I agree, that's, that's, if there's one that's gonna go, that's gonna be your animal.
Because there's no need for it right now. And if this thing's into the multimillion that was estimated a few years ago already.
And it is.
And we just got notified of 175 or 135,000 more in the water tower, which we definitely need.
Yep, you're right.
We might have to start cutting.
Yep, and I, and I agree, that'd be the first spot I'd look because that's, that's the one. So you're absolutely correct on that. So that would be my recommendation. You bid it as is with everything as we have. We see where those bids come in, we run the numbers, see where the assessments come in, and then we get out the red pen if we need to.
With the resolution you have pending here, Dave, are we tying A and B together? Cause you're talking, you just started talking about the tower repairs.
Yes.
That approved?
Yes, so the, the tower repairs are included in this plan set in front of me.
Got it.
Yep, so, so I wanted, so I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that change. The scope of that improvement has changed, but.
So then one general contractor is gonna be contracting out the tower too?
More than likely, yes. USDA requires that we do it as one.
Have the administrator. At the time of bid openings, that on the agenda is Oakwood Avenue, Main Street to Second Street. Be discussed.
Yeah, and then we'll have that broken out at that time on, on what the cost is on that street particularly.
One thing, Dave, does the water tower need to be listed in here too, being it's not with the streets on that resolution?
Since it's not being assessed, no.
Okay.
It does not.
That's just for that stuff.
Yeah, correct. Thank you though Chuck.
Nope.
Anybody else have any other questions? Cause of council wish to act?
I'll make a motion for resolution 2022 dash 121 to approve.
So I got. Streets have to get done.
Any other? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you very much. Last item on my list for tonight, lighting out on Richmond Business Park. Pat, I know you were talking to REA about that. Did you get a response? Are they gonna be okay with banners and?
Well, they, I talked to the general manager, he put me in contact or the person in charge of lighting or in design actually got back to me. And they said they would come out and take a look at it. Since then, we have not.
Okay, alright.
A word from them.
Okay, so I will touch base with them as well, Pat, since you've talked to them already, as long as you're okay with that.
That's fine. I just wanted to know the options and that we weren't the only city out there that wanted somewhat decorative poles in the REA area.
Yeah, we're not.
You know, and as a customer of REA, I figured it's no problem to go up and see with those guys.
No, it isn't, and they're, they're honestly pretty easy to talk to as far as that goes, responsive usually.
I sat down and one, we're 20, 25 minutes explaining what we are and what we, you know, any type of idea. And then he turned it to design, design really said, yes, thank you, we'll get back to you and they were gonna check all options.
That's where it sits.
And that's where it's sitting.
Alright, well, I will put a call in and check up on that and mention that you talked to them and then we'll continue that conversation as we go here. Otherwise, I saw the developer out on the business park submitted some permit applications and stuff with watershed district, so things are moving out there too, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Dave? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jason.
We'll move on to police department report for this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Started with just a monthly report for January in Richmond, there were 78 total incidents, 10 medicals, six, or two suspicious activities, 12 traffic stops with one citation and then 52 miscellaneous calls for service. Follow up on the hiring process, which we did at the end of last year, beginning of this year, have Alton Hag here tonight. He was the individual selected for the full-time position. He had a year of, year and a half of experience in Painesville, he's going through a training process right now and hopefully have him on the road shortly. You wanna stand up and give a little spiel about yourself?
Um, I made you like you said, I have been for a case of this program for just shy of two years, year and a half. My parents have a cabin just outside of town here, so I'm really excited to be working in this area. I'm excited to be here in this community as well as Cold Spring. You guys are everything I guess, I don't know.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Body cameras, everything got approved last week. We're working on getting them ordered and they're telling us right now it's, they're six to 12 weeks out, so we should have them out and about hopefully by early summer. Community policing agreement, our next meeting is next week, March 9th at 5:30 in the Cold Spring City Council chambers. If anybody wants to attend and join in on the conversation, we're nearing the end, hopefully week's meeting, we have a finished document that we can get together and sign in April. So it's been a good discussion and if anybody's interested in, in attending, please do. And then just one other thing, reminder for snow parking, coming into March, I don't know how many more snowstorms we'll have, but just make sure during those snowstorms, we get the vehicles off the roads. And I know in the last one, we had a couple citations and some warnings and stuff that we needed to move vehicles, so still out there doing it and just a reminder for everybody to get vehicles off the road. That's all I have unless you guys have questions for me.
Thank you for the snow vehicle problem because I know that there was a few residents were upset about some that were out there.
Yep, absolutely.
So if we could stay on top of that in case we do get snow.
Absolutely. Hopefully we're done with the cold and the bitter cold, so we'll start warming up shortly.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. Move on to the arena and parks.
Evening, council, mayor. Everybody at home watching us live. Little link. Amming it up. So we're going to arena stuff, obviously we're winding down. We'll be taking glass down next Monday, figure skating show the following week and then the ice will, will come out the 14th and 15th. With the new boards, we're not sure how that process is actually gonna work with all of that and boards going down. And we do know the glass is much heavier now than it was before. We had. We had a really good week last week. Our girls high school team went down and represented at the state tournament in St. Paul. And they took home the constellation championship, which just kinda means we're, we're doing some things right as far as hockey and, and the skating community. So that was a really fun experience to be a part of. As far as the boards going out, we'll remove the north boards like we always do in front of the bleachers and then we'll expose the east garage door like we normally do so we can get in and out with some things. Maybe a little more time consuming this year, just because of the new procedure. Once the season's done, we're gonna send the Zamboni into our mechanic and have a good go over. It's been quite a few years since we've done that, bearings and everything else. So we'll send that off to Wisconsin. Our mechanic is in Somerset, Wisconsin. We have some lacrosse session set up for the building as soon as we get, get ice out and building changed over right at the end of March. And then as it stands now, we have three April events scheduled. We have the rabbit show and then we have. Saying kind of busy this, this spring down there. Talking about the siding, we had talked about that last fall and I had. Made contacts and just. For one reason or another, the meetings never happened, but I did wind up meeting with Chad from Valley Construction Midwest Metals out of the Wilmer area. They're the business that did the new gilth building. And he came out and took on. Fixing the metal siding on the arena. And he's gonna come back at us with some more numbers. I have another meeting scheduled for this week with another contractor and another metal fabricator guy. To, to go to do the same thing. That's another company, so. One of the concepts is, is cause I mean, there's a lot of steel on that building, obviously was to, and most of our damage is down at the bottom where the snow falls and the ice falls off the building. So we're talking about possibly wainscoting the bottom, cutting the bottom four feet off. And then putting new steel to kind of match the color scheme of the building, which is green and beige, so green and white. And once we get some numbers on that, I'll be coming back to you and then we'll try to figure out how to, how to make it happen, so. Another project that's kind of in the works down there is, is an expansion. Right now is, it's been there, it's been there since 16. And that's the high school locker rooms. That's what they've been using for adversity locker rooms for the last number of years, so. Had an interested party in expanding and actually creating an actual locker room space back there. That's not a trailer on wheels. And then attached to that space would be a large training with plates. Or you could use it as a small meeting space too. So I was asked to send a letter of what the situation is and I did send that off and I, you know, explained to them what the situation was down there. We do try to use the small areas of the rink to do physical training. We got teams doing yoga and stretching in the lobby while there's parents in there and locker rooms and all over the place. So I did provide you with a copy of that letter. And then in, in 2017, I had. I had a drawing done of a, just, just spitballing of, of an, an expansion for the back of the building. Once that trailer went in, I was like, eh, you know? And I provided you with that. Really know where this is going right now. I do know that there's an interest part, interested party in paying for it. So it would be coming out of our, much like the arena boards and scoreboards, so it's kind of like the same concept. So it's very new, it's very fresh. Yeah, I know the drawing was from 2017, but that was just some exploration we were doing, so I'll have more information for you guys as we kind of move along. I'm waiting for 2000, 2017 numbers, so. Parks, we're a few months away from opening up and working on scheduling. We're having a little league meeting on. March 14th, so we'll know kind of where we're at with the planning and scheduling of, of little league. I do know that there is a push to get Babe Ruth baseball back in town, which would be really good. We haven't had Babe Ruth for about four years, so. The numbers of the participants are there. We just need to put the program back together possibly. And then, you know, there's a lot of, it's spring, everybody's gonna be doing yard work while we'll be doing park work, so. And then we, as we talked about at the last workshop, the gazebo moving ahead to over at the new Legion Park. So at this time, I don't have a lot of updates on summer programming. I do know that soccer group wants to come back and they want to add a field out there, another, another soccer field out there. So we're kind of exploring space in the park. Cause right now, we know with the pickleball courts going in, we know we can do two fields, a small field and an intermediate field. Brings people into our community and they're using our facilities and I mean, that's really what we want, but I'm not sure exactly because they're doing registration for soccer right now. No new updates on the pickleball courts. We're waiting on the state to release some funds and we'll see. I, I don't know, the further we get along, the less likely it seems that it might happen this year. I didn't, I don't want to jinx anything, but obviously the longer it takes for us to get the money released to us, the longer it's gonna take to do bidding and. And all of that. The music in the park group met last night, Stacy and Mike were there. And we did put together our tentative concert series. I don't want to put it out there right now because we're still contacting bands to make sure that the bands are correct with the dates that we have selected for them. And probably at the next workshop for the next, next meeting, we'll have information on that. We did get a good response today from the bands we've contacted, so moving forward with that. And then finally, the Recorri Trail Phase 3, we have a meeting tomorrow night. Bids should be ready to roll here pretty soon. I'm thinking from Scott, so I don't even know if it's been completed or not. I'll find out tomorrow. And we should be doing construction. Real soon, soon as we can. We do have set aside the week of March 21st, the three cities will be getting together to do the tree removal. Before the end of March because we want to watch out for long-eared bats. We have to remove the trees in the trail corridor prior to March 31st or we won't be able to do it because of long-eared bats. So there you go. So we'll be spending probably most of that week removing trees from the corridor, us, Rockville, Cold Spring. In a coordinated effort to do that. That's all I have, council. Does anyone have anything for me?
Kevin, do you take care of the profit loss report on the, on the arena?
City Hall does.
Because at the last workshop, one of the council people alluded to that we are not making or we're not breaking even down there. So I definitely would like you to work with the administrator to come up with a report and have it to us before the workshop, if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, all that information is, would come out of city hall. I mean, I do the day to day.
Questions, I would like you to work with her.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions for Kevin?
Alright, thanks guys.
Thanks, Kevin. Move on to people service. Alec.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies of the council. I'm just gonna go over a few of the more important bullet points in the council report that you have in your packet. Let's see, first things first. What was that? It wasn't printed in there. Okay, so I'll go over all of them. We have some monitoring, level monitoring equipment that I have moved from the alum room into the water treatment plant. Just monitoring different chemicals I've since obtained for the time that I am here, another piece of equipment that will be put in there shortly. Assisted Gordian removing the Christmas decorations. They, they were very nice. It was great to drive through here over the winter. It was very nice to see that. Did a water shut off for Gilth to perform interior line maintenance at one of the residences town. Checked the status of a curb stop at a abandoned house within town limits with the purpose of ensuring that leak was not happening. That curb stop was indeed shut off last fall, so that was just a discovery. And then it was later turned back on once the homeowner had caught up on the water payments. Unfortunately, multiple interior leaking points were discovered by the homeowner, making them aggravated, understandably. Next up, due to a resident complaint, we had sent extra water sampling from a hydrant and an interior faucet with concerns. Water based on the deaths of multiple pets within a. Close radius of one another. All the laboratory results came back very good. All were under EPA and Minnesota Department of Health standards. Or they were within the standards. They were well below the regulated limit for the contaminant. I also just got back from a three days, three day safety and training in Northern Iowa. Catching up on people services standards of safety and the way that we do things here, so that was good. As far as wastewater operations, on the very cold nights when it reached below 15 degrees, we had kept the light on in the Headworks building because we were getting alarms for low temperature. So that was just running the heating blower equipment all night in order to keep things from freezing and to keep all the equipment running well. We did have one of the mixers in the oxidation ditch fail. We pulled it from the current, we pulled the working mixer from the currently unused. We pulled it from the current, we pulled the working mixer from the currently unused oxidation ditch and moved it. To the one that is. Install it. We sent twenty thousand gallons of sludge up to the reed beds while monitoring phosphorus runoff closely. And we did have to increase the chemical treatment, the alum fairly significantly. But we were still over the permit limit for a couple of days before phosphorus levels finally dropped. We're looking into the possibility of getting the beds dredged. And so that the phosphorus is maintained within the permit limits. There was a reported gurgling from a residence toilet. I pulled manhole covers both above and downstream from the residents. This is the water piping where the water plant back flows along that street. Not too long ago, so. Believe that's all I have. Do you have any questions regarding anything I just?
I have a few questions. First of all, where was the test taken and what hydrant, what intersection of the water that was the complaint area?
So it was over by.
Okay, where's our water level on wells?
I don't have those current levels. It is a little bit difficult to get to the well heads with current snow conditions. But I can work with the administrator to get.
The reason I'm asking, did we recover from the summer?
Yes, oh yeah, yes, absolutely.
So we don't have to worry about a well problem this spring.
I see no reason to, but I will keep an eye on that.
The last item was that a year ago, year and a half, I think, six months apart, we were told that we might have to replace. Our, our reeds in our reed bed. How are we doing on that? Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, I can start with the reed beds. We are, what's happening there is last fall, if you remember, we had them come in, it was actually U of M. It was state, I don't remember what, it, the University of Minnesota, MPC, Department of Ag, they're all involved in this whole. Because they're non-native fragmities, you know, so it's agriculture, it's all of the above, they're all involved in this. And it was, I think, the U of M that funded the company to come out and they sprayed to kill all of our reeds that are in there, all of fragmities. Hopefully come spring, they won't be growing. We're expecting some will be getting some growth. Back and spray them again. Have a couple options and what I'm thinking, it's probably going to be our best option is to use it as drying beds. We can still put flow up there. The problem is like Alec had said in the report, when we send twenty thousand gallons up there. We, for many, many, for fifteen years, we've been using them, the reed beds for our sludge. Sludge is basically the byproduct of the wastewater. When we use the bio P process, all of the phosphorus ends up in the sludge. The sludge never leaves the plant. We're chasing our tail with it. We sent twenty thousand gallons up there. We're getting about a hundred parts per million of, over that phosphorus back to the head of the plant. Our normal domestic is about seven parts per million. So we're getting way overloaded with phosphorus, then we have to monitor it so closely and kick up the chemical and everything, so we meet limits. We were over for a couple of days on our phosphorus. The good thing with our phosphorus limit is it's a rolling twelve-month average, so we divide whatever. We divide about a hundred and four samples because we sample twice a week. So when we have a couple over the one limit, we're okay because we've had some that are in point twos and point threes, so we're okay for a while. You know, if we start getting extended periods of time where we're over, then we get concerned. But back to reed beds, we're thinking. U of M, Department of Ag, all these different entities, they're doing research right now on maybe different plants that are going to work. They're doing research, trying to find funding on how they can help out with this. We might even have a help on getting the stuff hauled out. We don't know yet if we're even going to be able to land a plant, if it's going to have to go to a landfill. Not positive yet. So we'll have to do like different metals, that kind of stuff on it. Not sure how it will get treated.
You are in the state of Minnesota. Couple dozen, couple hundred, couple thousand.
It's, it's in two to three dozen. Well, probably fifty, I think, it's something like that, but some of them, and there's some that are. There's definitely a lot of them that are ahead of us. As far as they did killing the year earlier, whatever, that kind of stuff, so I'm kind of sitting back and watching, seeing what works, what don't work, that kind of thing. We do have enough storage up there, it's just the phosphorus issue that's, you know, to use them as drying beds. It'll work and if it ain't twenty twenty-three when we can do it, you know, it can wait another year. We will have enough room up there. But it's, um. The chemicals. You know, and obviously our ultimate goal is protection of the environment, you know, we don't want phosphorus getting released to the river, so. Any other questions on reed beds? Well, you've heard of it. Anyhow, PFAS is a new big thing that's being monitored, but no, well, actually there is limits that are. No, it's, it's being monitored, but there's no limit set yet. We had, middle of September, when I first started, the state came out to do testing of our wells. Because they want to go around and test almost all the wells in the state to see. If you remember, PFAS is. Good example is like the stain guard that goes on your furniture. It's the, the lining in your. Non-stick pans, pans on your stove, the lining like in a bag of microwave popcorn. Why don't the oil grease get to the outside of the bag? It's lined with PFAS. It's everywhere in the environment and it's getting into all of our groundwater everywhere. We had ours tested mid-September. I emailed back last week, the week before, it's like, we haven't heard anything yet, what's going on? Well, it's gonna, they do have results back and it's going to take a month or two yet to get letters out, but we are. They can't say there's no, we're below the threshold of any action to be taken, that kind of stuff. We're rather low. Sounds like there are some around Twin Cities metro area, I think closer probably to three M plants, that kind of stuff that are over, but. Most outstate is okay, so our wells are good, so that was good news. Another thing coming down the pipe is lead and copper. We, the lead and copper rules are changing. Everything goes back to Flint, Michigan. You remember when they had the big issues? These are rules that are coming down from that. Essentially, all we really know so far is by October one, I think it is. Twenty twenty-four, we should have a good inventory of what we have for, what our residents have for piping in their house. What we have to know is, is there any lead lines in town? And if they are, we should be proactive in replacing them. If we are failing our lead tests, which we're not, we're below the threshold, but then we. I believe we're going to have to have a good inventory by twenty twenty-four, late twenty twenty-four. Is that correct, Dave? Yeah, so it's just the next thing coming down the pipe. We had a water main break on Sunday. I don't know how many of you are aware of that, but it was right on Grant. It was, I'll take this water main break anytime. Both valves worked, they shut the water off. How much? Three only? I thought it would have been more, but. No, so it was, the things are going to happen and what's weird is that lining, that old, and it was right in one of the joints or the pipes slipped together. And there was a hole, you could almost duck this pen into, it's coming out the side right inside that joint where, I don't know if a gasket slowly. I don't know. Did you think? Okay. That's all I have for updates and I'll mention the testing we did of extra water up there and stuff, so. You know, just unique situations that we.
No, but thank you for making a personal report. Thank both of you.
Yep, not a problem. Yeah, in the future, it's the Alec or Alec and me are probably normally him and if there's bigger stuff to report on. And we'll keep you posted on reed beds and whatever else we find out. And tours, anyone?
Now it's getting warmer. I've been warned.
Don't listen to Tess, it's not near as bad as she says.
Okay, fair enough.
Alright, thanks Greg and Alec. Public Works, Gordy?
Good evening, council. It's one thing about coming up for one of the last ones because as everybody was talking, I was scratching off my list here. So thank you, Dave. Thank you, council, for allowing us to go out for those bids on these streets. We definitely need some maintenance over there. King Avenue, we've had a whole bunch, I got a whole list of different, different items we had going on, on over there. So thank you for, for going forward on this project. Greg alluded to the, the break over on Grant. Sunday morning, I ran over to Jill's for breakfast and then, of course, I seen water in the middle of the street. I thought it was something that's coming out of the alleyway. When I turned around, came back, I noticed it was actually steaming and the road was actually lifting. So therefore, we knew that we had a water break. I got ahold of Greg and I got ahold of Jeff Kramer right away. Over in Cold Spring and did emergency locate and by eight o'clock, we had Alec in town, we had Greg in town. We had the guys from Jeff Kramer's group, guys were ready, were here taking a look at it. I got ahold of the county ASAP. Because we had to dig into their street and the street was relatively new, the tar is relatively new. But Greg, that water line we're talking about was actually an O-line. What we did is we repaired from First Street out. To the trail. Back in thirteen, this was still the old part of the pipe yet, so. It's, our map shows it's an eight-inch pipe, it's actually a six-inch pipe, inductile. And what happened was the pipe, when it was laid in there, from day one, it was misaligned. By being misaligned, what happened is the gasket pushed out and yes, on the bottom of the pipe was the size of a pencil. Alec and I, we kind of knew we'd been having, we're missing water in town for a little while. So what we did was we kind of watched that and then after we seen that, we had a leak there, that well, that's our, that's our leak, okay? We looked at the size of the hole it was and it came up to the conclusion it was around ten thousand gallons a day. Yeah, pretty close, pretty close to that, so there's our leak. Kramers did dig it up. We got a patch on it. Basically, what happened is we cut out a section where the bell and this other pipe meet. We cut out a section and what we did is we put two spools in there. We put a piece of six-inch pipe in it, we put two spools in there, which clamped in there. They say they last, we're hoping it's last, nevertheless, I will be documenting on our maps that that's what's actually in that street. Same thing we over on Fur Avenue, been documented, documented on our maps that there's actually a patch in there, so for the next generation of people running the city. I will know that what's actually going on in the street, so that's kind of what's going on over there. We didn't leave the hole open because there's so much water that was in that hole. That was actually going up under the frost line, under the sidewalks and into the yards. So what we did was, we got the okay by the county to leave the road barricaded overnight and the next morning we actually. And then we have to get it to county specs and retire, so that's what we'll have to do this spring regarding that patch.
Gordy, do you know what, what year that pipe was put in the ground?
Way before my time.
Okay, so it's been there a while.
Way before. I, I would say that that would have been in the eighties, seventies or eighties. I would think. Also on that corner, you guys remember a year, year and a half ago, we had to fix a hydrant on that corner. And then from that, new stuff. So that's what kind of went on there. Storm drains, I've been cleaning out storm drains. That's all we've been doing, is cleaning out storm drains, getting the water to flow. Today, again, I was out, so I've been doing that. And the other thing I had real quickly here was the flags on Centennial Park. Centennial Park, the three flags that are out there, the American Legion take care of those, they're the responsibilities for their memorial that's out there. And we take care of it. You know, lower the flags, raise the flag, stuff like that, but they're ultimately responsible for it. This winter, the flag, the United States flag got really shredded out there. And I went down out there to replace it and I couldn't get the flag down because inside the flag pole, the ropes are actually frozen to the bottom of the pole. Inside, so I couldn't get the flag down. I felt terrible because the United States flag, you should really actually not let things up there where it's shredded. So I got ahold of the American Legion and I asked them if I could cut the rope, drop the flag. So the reason I'm bringing this stuff up is because we have two more flags out there, I can't get them down, they're okay. Come down. They said we're going to be okay with that because they don't want to have a shredded flag up there. And what we're looking at possibly doing is winter months, when the park, Kevin closed the park up, the American Legion will pull their flags off of that. And we'll just shut her down for the winter months because they get shredded out there. And the American Legions are the ones that are responsible for taking care of those flags. We just help them with, assist with it, so that's what's kind of going. We figured that was a standalone project where we could do that ourselves, so what I'm going to be doing is going out for bids. For some of our streets that are ten years or fifteen years old, that never been seal coated, so I'll be coming back with some numbers regarding that. So that's all I have right now, if anybody's got any questions.
Seal coating part, you have money in your budget for.
Correct.
Specific before that.
Correct.
I believe we increased that this past year when we increased taxes.
But yeah, the biggest thing is, is that you guys okayed the, the, with the street project, it's very crucial. That helps. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordy.
Thanks, Greg.
At this time, there's no fire report, no emergency management. We'll move on to EDA report for tonight from your.
Yeah, um, we did have a meeting here on Tuesday, our last one was Tuesday, February fifteenth. Very good meeting, one of the things that was on our agenda for the year, we needed to pick some new elections of officers for the EDA and stuff too. And we did have a majority vote and Emily Munnens is going to be the president this year for the EDA. Along with the vice president will be Kate Lemke, so she will be the vice president this year during our meeting, so. So one of the things that we approved, we also looked at, Gilk Plumbing came up to the, came up to us. Looking for some commercial enhancement money. This will be actually for their existing piece of property. That they're going to be doing. Once they get moved out, they're looking at doing some improvements. Because the next tenant that's going to be coming in there kind of is asking for some, some improvements. So they came to the EDA asking for some enhancement money, basically to do some remodeling or repairs. To make things look obviously a lot nicer on the outside of that building, so we took a look at that, had that discussion. Then we went over with Tracy Ryan. Overall, what the Economic Development Authority work plan is, we've kind of been keeping that kind of in the background. It's basically what it is in a nutshell. It's just the things as an EDA that we look at, that we're trying to have people in charge of. In these particular areas to kind of have them focused. In these particular areas to kind of have them focus on things that we would like to actually look to see what maybe can be done. With certain points within the EDA. Okay, so we kind of cleaned that all up with. Some peoples are going to take, you know, they're, they're called the point person. So they're going to be the ones that are responsible for that. One example would be for. Would be one point person would be going up and asking one of the local businesses, especially obviously one of the new businesses in town. We always try to invite them in, come in and ask them and then just ask them some questions and have them fill out a little form prior to. And just basically we get to know them, they get to know us, get to know some of the things that are. Available to them as, as new businesses in the town of Richmond, meaning from a financial standpoint and, and all that stuff too. So. And then we began to have continued discussions a little bit about, you know, where we're, where we're moving forward. You know, in, in Richmond right now, obviously a lot of people can see currently right now, one of our goals has been for a lot of years. Is to fill up downtown and we're doing a lot better job. You can see the businesses that are coming in. We've got more and more coming in. We've got obviously our new development going on with our investment property place out on Highway 23. That's moving forward. And then we also have a existing building that's only been. Roughly in operation for, I would say, just a few years. And that's Kate Lemke's business, the Renegade Manufacturing, the truck place right on 23. They are really looking forward. They are going to be doing an expansion. They need more room, they need more space, which in turn generates a possibility of also some more. People working for them also too. So. Other than that, I think that's about what we kind of talked about. Emily, do you have anything else you want to add?
I think that covers it, Mike.
All right. And our next meeting is on Tuesday, March 15th, and it's always open to the public at 6:30 here at City Hall. Anybody have any questions?
Who do you contact to be on the agenda?
Um, you would contact Tessa or you contact Stacy, who's, who's available at that time. If you want to, if you want to become on the, or if somebody wants to be on the agenda. Thanks, Pat.
All right. Thanks, Mike. We'll move on to planning commission. There was no February meeting and our next meeting is March 24th, if necessary. Recoray Trail meeting is tomorrow morning in Cold Spring, I believe, Rockville. And that, that means at what time, Kevin? 9:00 AM. All right. So that's the next trail meeting. And then for us, our next council meeting will be the 17th of March on Thursday night at 6:30. Does anybody else have anything to add for the good of the city? If not, meetings adjourned.